He asked how long we're going to be here, and I said, "Ask Ben," it'll be 7:15. Darryl wanted to know how long we'll be here, and I said, "Ask Ben," he says 7:15.
I'm leaving at 7:15.
Are you?
I had to go to the airport and pick up a girl, so, yeah, not that big of a thing.
This is the first time we get to watch the pool activity in action. How did things go, you guys, when I was... How did he do? Did he, you know?
We got out sooner than any time we've ever done before.
Did you beat the record? Nope. Did you seriously?
There was probably a record on there.
Snap!
It says in the minutes, it was six something.
What? Are you serious? Game on! Game on, Ben.
As you know, it depends on the agenda, it depends on who you know.
That's true. That's so true.
My wife asks me every time, "How long are we going to be?" And I says, "Well, there's a couple of discussions."
Thanks for that update email.
Or they can be ninety minutes.
Exactly.
Hey.
Okay.
How are you? Doing good?
All righty. Well, are we ready to go?
Yep.
Ready to go? Okay. Let me get the microphone here. Welcome, welcome, to our Linden City Council today, Monday, June 6th, 2022. We'd like to welcome all those that are here in the room, as well as any of those that are watching online, present or future. And we will now start off our... We always start off with an invocation. This evening, we will have that given by Councilmember Jake Hoyt, and then we will have a pledge of allegiance given by our new rodeo queen, Aubrey Christiansen. All right. Christiansen, all right.
Our dear, kind, and gracious heavenly Father, we're so thankful for the opportunity we have to meet together today in this beautiful building, in this beautiful city. We're thankful for staff and for residents, for the citizens that make up this great city and make it what it is. We're thankful for those that have chosen to attend tonight. We ask that a spirit of willingness to understand and to learn and grow together will be here and will join with us. We're thankful for this beautiful land that thou has blessed us with. We ask a special blessing in the form of water, that our reservoirs will fill, that we'll be able to use it as we need. We ask a special blessing also on our first responders. We're especially thankful for them, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ooh, fun.
It's not for pie in the face, right?
Everyone, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you very much, Aubrey. All right. As we all take our seats now, we will have our roll call from our council members. I'll start here at my right.
Van Broderick, present.
Mike Van Cherry, present.
Carolyn Lundberg, present.
Darryl McElby, present.
Jake Hoyt, present.
Randy Powell, present.
Okay, very good. We're all here in attendance. Now, we will move forward to item number two on the agenda, which is our presentations and announcements portion. So, this is where we will first have any comments from the general public, if there's something that you would... Sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. Comments from the council. We'll have a little bit of a report here, announcements from each of our council members, and then we'll have also... Sorry. We had council reports, not at this time. Any announcements from council that is not in their report? Okay, very good. So, we will move forward to our visitors, our special visitors that are here. Go ahead and please join us here at the front, our Little Miss Linden, new junior royalty, rodeo royalty. Welcome, young ladies.
I get to direct these wonderful ladies. They were crowned a little bit over a month ago, and they'll represent the city of Linden and the sport of rodeo throughout the year. Their competition included modeling, a speech, an interview, impromptu questions, and horsemanship. And I'll just let them introduce themselves. Hi, everyone. My name is Aubrey Christiansen, and I'm so excited to be a representative of the Linden Days Rodeo and other parades and rodeos. I want to thank you all for keeping the Western spirit alive, and I want to thank you all for the funding to expand the arena, to make it a safe environment for everyone in the community to come and ride their horses.
My name's Lexi Walker, and I'm also really excited to represent Linden and for our city and other rodeos. I'd also like to thank you guys for the funding for our arena. I know that I ride in that arena every single day, and I really appreciate that. And my favorite part of the competition was probably the horsemanship part, because everyone is just so supportive during that part of it. And anytime I would pass the side of the arena, they'd kind of cheer me on. Even if you don't win, there's still just such a good environment to me.
Hi, I'm Lydia Mappe, and I'm the second tenant for the 2022 Rodeo Royalty. And I am so grateful for the opportunity to be here, and I am so excited for the new Linden arena renovations coming up. And my favorite part of the competition was probably just like the friendly atmosphere that was put on there and just the welcome of people.
Thank you so much, Aubrey, Alexis, and Lydia. If you'll want to stay there for a minute, we always love to grab a quick picture with our council with you, if that's okay, right where you are. And these young ladies, there were about a dozen or so that came that day, and they had to answer some hard questions and speak and then show some amazing skills with their animals, and so we're really proud of them. Thank you for representing us so well throughout the rest of this year. So, let's, if we may, have the council come.
Did you do barrel racing?
We did barrel racing.
Oh, that's harder.
Yeah, so barrel racing is also very fun.
It is.
Thank you.
All right. They are going to have a very busy summer. How many events are you guys already slated on the calendar to cover, just in the next couple of months?
At least like ten to twenty. They actually did their first rodeo last weekend.
Really?
Like the hot one every week.
Busy, busy.
And then parades as well?
Yes.
Representing at the different city celebrations? Okay, awesome, awesome. Thank you so much. All right, so moving on, we now get to have a really special presentation from the Utah Valley Chamber. And we'd love to invite you gentlemen to come up here to this table.
Does it matter to you?
What are you most comfortable? You can add another chair.
We'll only want to speak at a time, so we'll sit.
Okay. There is a mic. We love it if you could speak in the mic as much as possible as you kind of, so it can be recorded and those online can hear.
Right. Let me do introductions first of all. Thank you for having us. The Utah Valley Chamber of Commerce is a regional conference, commerce, and this chamber really handles and addresses some of the issues that impact the valley countywide. And so, we're privileged to work with U.UTA, the Utah Lake Commission, and now the new Utah Lake Authority that has been formed. I personally sit on those boards. And our businesses in particular, in this chamber, appreciate the opportunity to have their voice represented in a chamber that is focused on those issues valleywide. We work very closely with the city chambers. We have partnered in a lot of activities and events, especially these last eight, twelve months. And we'll actually speak about one event in October, where we have been tied very closely with the Linden Pleasant Grove Chamber, and looking forward to bringing you up to speed on some of those activities in the coming months. Again, my name is Curtis Blair. I lead the chamber. David Rowley is over at Community and Government Relations, and Ryan Beck is an executive at Envision Utah. The Utah Valley Chamber partnered with Envision Utah and the Kimsey Gardner Institute to formulate our initial valley visioning plans that help create a combined, community-driven vision of what this valley might look like over the next fifty, sixty years. And through a series of surveys, town meetings, consultations with mayors and city council, we were able to craft a kind of a heat map of how this county might grow, given the tremendous boom in population that we'll be seeing. And so, we'll speak a little bit about an update on that and share with you an invitation for an event in October. If I may, Mayor, take just a point of personal privilege. I don't know if you know I'm doing this. My great-grandfather is Harold Erickson, and he and Elvie lived just across the street here in Hark Cliff. My father-in-law is David Erickson, who works with us at the chamber. He's a CPA by trade, and he provides services to us pro bono, and we're really grateful for that. I think he wanted to make sure that his son-in-law did okay in his first new position here as chamber president. But I have memories of Harold running across this busy street, back and forth between Hark Cliff and this new building at the time. And he was always so proud of working not only for Geneva Steel, but having a volunteer position here at the city in Linden. And so, I have memories of my kids riding their bikes around Hark Cliff, and then we'd come home to visit Grandma, Grandpa every summer. So, thank you for having us, and we're appreciative of the time that you've given us. And in fact, I'll turn the time over to David and then Ryan.
So, just to start off with, we, as Curtis mentioned, we did partner with all of the chambers here in the valley through the Association of the Utah County Chambers. It's just a PDF. Through the Association of the Utah County Chambers.
You're on my other screen. If you pull it all the way left, I think you'll get there here.
There we go.
There you go.
So, with all of the chambers, along with Envision Utah, BYU and UVU, we were able to partner and complete the valley visioning study that was done back in 2018. We had over eleven thousand respondents come back to us with that. So, just to give you a little timeline, we started off back then with a project where we would listen to what our residents had to say. There were some surveys that went out. There were some scenarios that were put together based on that and then sent out, and a strategic plan was developed. Well, as we all know, COVID hit, and that kind of put everything on hold for everybody. And so, we took a little break there. Last October, we started with our Growth and Prosperity Summit, our first one. It will be, it's an annual event, and we will be going forward with that. However, it's part of the implementation of this valley visioning plan that we're going to talk a little bit about today. And then we'll have an ask, going to save the date for you here as we get towards the end, for Growth and Prosperity Summit Number Two in October of this year.
All right. Thank you, David. I can run the mouse here. All right, so David mentioned that we did a lot of survey work. We had eleven thousand people weigh in on this, and this was just one of the questions, kind of one of the overarching questions about what we asked the residents of Utah County. So, thinking about the quality of life in Utah County, please identify which of the following factors has the greatest positive impact on the overall quality of life for you personally. And you can see things just what you would think is important to most people. It's about the people, it's about the economy, it's about nature, you know, the values, family and kid-friendly, safe places, low cost of living, great outdoor rec opportunities. So, this has kind of created kind of a scope for us, what we really needed to dig into and what we wanted to look at. So, slide. And so, that's, you know, we mentioned the workshops, the scenarios, the over, really over a two-year process, we came up with a vision based around these, the concepts you see, clean air and educate, you know, it's about educating our kids, it's about recreation opportunities, agriculture, housing options, so that our kids can afford to live here into the future. And so, how we figure we're going to get to this and what was supported and what we saw on the maps and what people showed us is this, this vision map that has centers on it. You can see Linden's, Linden's included here, but so are all of the other, that everyone, you know, the growth is dispersed, maybe a little bit heavier on the west side, Eagle Mountain, Saratoga, which is already happening, where I already see the market driving it that way. But, there you go. But, but this, this concept of centers, a different hierarchy of centers, maybe all the way from city centers and urban centers to neighborhood centers, whatever's appropriate for your city, for Linden, what makes sense here and what, what the residents of, of what Linden wants. So, slide. So, on the left here is the baseline. This is, if we continue to grow how we have for the last twenty years, this is what 2050 might look like. So, the lighter yellow there is existing growth, and that would be the footprint, let's call it the urban footprint, in the darker, the darker orange of how much land we might consume, and think about the impacts, think about the roads we'd need to build, think about where we'd need to take the water. This is kind of what it would look like. So, on the right side is the vision. This is what people, residents, told us they like, how they like to grow and develop. And you can see it's, it's a smaller footprint, but what does that mean? You know, one of those, one of those cornerstones, I'll use as an example, was agriculture. People said they want to maintain the quality of life in agriculture and the open space that's provided with that. They'd love to keep that. That's important to them. So, if you look just, you know, south of Utah Lake, down there by Spanish Fork or Pason, you know, look at all that agricultural land we don't build on. So, good stuff, that's just one example. Also, think about how many less road miles we'll have to build. I mean, that's where we pay our tax dollars to, and I don't know anyone in this room who probably likes paying any more than they have to. So, lots of, lots of great benefits for building in this, this vision scenario. So, we had, we didn't stop, you know, at the end of this process, when we, we kept the work going. We literally just asked this question about, about growth in December. We ask, and we've been asking it since 1997. We ask it every few years. And the question is, do you believe that future growth will make things better or worse in Utah? You know, we're growing, we have a strong economy, that's great. We have a high birth rate of kids, can't argue with that. And so, but this is the first time in, in Envision Utah's history, in twenty-five years of asking this question, that it's flipped. And when we asked it in 2014, people were a little more excited about growth than being a little bit more pessimistic. That flipped when we asked in 2021. People are not excited about growth. I mean, I think we can, we can feel the pressures every, you know, every day, whether it's, I just drove through Draper to get here, as you probably noticed me walking the door, like right on time, it's like... So, so what do we do with this? What do we do with this, with this growth? And I think that points right back to this vision, growing in a way that residents are supportive of, is really important, so.
So, the vision was, was given as a, it's a twenty-six-page document that can be downloaded. If you'd like to, there's a QR code that you can just snap a picture of and grab a copy of that very easily. But this, this plan walks through those areas that we talked about of how to grow responsibly. We know that the growth is coming, we can see that, we know that because of the external factors that Ryan mentioned, it's going to happen. But let's make it so that we grow responsibly and that we're able to do that. And one of the ways that we do that is we talk about the principles of growth and prosperity. So, back in October of last year, we put together a compact on growth and prosperity. And this compact outlines six key principles, and if you haven't had a chance to look at that, I do have a copy of it right here, if you want to see it. But it, it talks about the business environment in Utah Valley. It talks about education and how we develop our workforce. It talks about what we're going to have to do with healthcare, what we're going to have to do with our natural resources, water, energy, those types of things. Attainable housing is a big, is a big thing. I have two of my kids living in my basement with their families because they can't afford to move out right now. And so, we're, you know, attainable housing is a big one, especially for me, because I kind of like to be the empty nester, I'm supposed to be. Transportation and infrastructure is a big one as well. And so, as we talk about these principles, what are the key things that we needed to do, to do there? And we encouraged, at our Growth and Prosperity Conference last year, we had an eight-by-four-foot copy of this compact that we set up and had a number of people signing that, Governor Herbert, Governor Cox, President Tuminez of UVU signed it, a number of others have signed that, and we continue to have people sign it today. By snapping a picture of that QR code, it will actually take you to the link where you can go online, you can read it, and you can electronically sign it. We're kind of running out of room on the big one as of right now, so. But we want to encourage you to look at that and adopt that kind of as a model for growth in Linden City. This is one of the ways that you can effectively, or grow responsibly and, and do that, and it talks about those types of things. And then finally, we'd like to invite you to save the date, October 27th, at Utah Valley University. We will be having our Growth and Prosperity Summit Number Two. We can, if you're interested, you can email me too at david@thechamber.org, and I will make sure that you get registered for that. Registration should be going up later this week, actually. So, we'll be able to get you that. But it, it's a wonderful conference. We're going to have a number of keynotes, a number of panel speakers, we're going to have a TEDx-like format, where we have rapid fires, rapid-fire things. And we even want to, to invite Mayor Lundberg to come there as well and participate on one of our panels. We want all the mayors in Utah County to come.
Well, Mayor Azerston did a great job in one of them last time.
He did last year.
Yeah.
But he's not here now, so it's your turn.
That's right.
Great.
But we encourage you all to come. It's not very long, eight to three, at UVU, will be in the Sorenson Student Center.
Is this the same summit that's traditionally been in Sundance for years past?
That is our executive summit, which is a little bit different. That summit is where we bring the executives from Utah County together.
More of a business-focused.
More of a business-focused summit. This one is all focused around principles of growth and prosperity. So, we'll have presentations on housing and transportation and natural resources, Utah Lake, things like that.
Right. And, and that's one thing that sets your chamber apart, I think, from, you know, we have fantastic chambers all over the cities, but their focus is a lot on how can we grow our business networking and thrive in the business community, and they make wonderful community partners and donate to the schools and donate to a lot of good causes. But you guys kind of take more of a macro approach with this symposium of bringing together all the legislators, all the, the people that are impacting kind of quality of life issues, and you have those. And I know my council that would probably love to hear about the different committees that get stood up and where maybe people can plug in and be involved and have a voice for their community on these issues.
We'd love that. In fact, if you had a liaison from city council here to work with us closely at the chamber, given that you've probably got a lot on your plate, we would welcome perhaps an email follow-up on which committees we could use some, some additional support from Linden City specifically. We are working with Eric Jensen, who is our local chamber representative in this area between Linden and Pleasant Grove, and he's a, he's a really approachable individual. But I think we ought to have someone from not only Pleasant Grove City Council, but also Linden City Council, as kind of our liaison for planning for the growth summit, too. It's a very similar summit to one Utah, except this really focuses on the issues, topics, and challenges that are facing this valley, this county. Okay. Thank you for the minutes. Any questions? We can help field.
Big fan, big fan of the chamber. Chambers in general, I think that the, the value you guys bring to a community is, cannot be quantified, and a lot of times, people don't understand that, and, and so I appreciate what you do, especially from a macro approach. It's excellent, so keep up the good work.
Utah County Chamber of Commerce is a wonderful organization. I was able to be a liaison back in twelve and thirteen along with Val Hale.
Val Hale, yeah.
Yep, it was a wonderful time to be there, so great to see it continuing on in even greater fashion. Thanks, all you do.
And I do have a question, but it, maybe it would beg more time than we have here today. But you talk about keeping the open space and having that growth sort of, you know, focused in a way that we don't just become a big sprawl.
Yeah.
But how do you do that? What are the strategies that cities and communities can do? Because you have private property owners who may have a different vision for...
Mayor, I, two years ago, and I can send you a copy of this, I have a forty-three strategy, I called it the Utah County Agriculture Toolbox, and it's forty-three strategies...
I've been to that website.
Great, that, that was my work. So, forty-three strategies about how Utah County can maintain that. And you're right, there's private property at stake here. You know, let's say you've been a farmer or rancher, and it's retirement age, you've worked hard your whole life, you're, you're land-rich but cash-poor, who's to say it's not your turn to sell, right? But what we did provide is strategies that if you want to stay, if you want that to stay agriculture, there's options, just making people aware, but...
And is that updated now with the new urban farm zoning that the county commissioners passed this last fall?
That, it, it is. It, it is, and it was that we actually, a lot of that agriculture work helped lead into some of that, some of that new zoning, so I was glad someone was paying attention.
Okay, great.
Very good.
One thing, in another life, many years ago, I was actually chairman of the Board of Directors for the chamber, before it was Valley, it was Provo Orum. And one challenge that we had was the larger corporations at that time, the Novels and the Word Perfects and the, the big ones, they always had the time and the resources to devote someone to be on the board or... And what we found was a, a lack, not through lack of desire, but more a lack of just time and availability for smaller businesses. And that was kind of one of the, kind of one of the complaints that we had. They just felt like that the big businesses were kind of getting all the attention and they were calling the shot. So, I'm confident that you folks have reached out and you're sampling to small businesses, mom-and-pop businesses, or, you know, under a certain amount, to make certain that their needs and their desires and their wishes are, are being considered, which I'm confident that you are, but I felt it incumbent to, to suggest that.
I'm glad you mentioned that, and I'm really happy to report that we have a partnership with two banks, one bank that specifically wants to fund startups, and another bank that wants to work with businesses that have at least one million in revenue and are growing to fifteen employees. And they've approached our chamber to address the needs of the small business. I came from small business, and when I joined the chamber, I remember thinking, we have all the banks, all the developers, all of the higher education, where are, where's my people? Where are my roots?
Yes, yeah.
And there's no big business that didn't start out as a medium business, and no medium that didn't start out as a small. And so, that's not lost on us. That's really an important point.
Appreciate that.
The, the second piece about that is, is that we just honored Steve Denzley at our last Pillar of the Valley six weeks ago, and it was an amazing ceremony. In fact, if we could follow up with the mayor and get you our two-and-a-half-minute summary video of that evening, you will be impressed by both Colleen Denzley, who received that award on behalf of her husband and their family, as well as Karyn Clark, who is our recipient in vivo this year, two honor, honors that were bestowed on people that have made a big difference, which is the whole point of that, that, that honor. They receive that with, with such grace and, and, and really are looking at some of the best ways to continue growing what I think is the treasure house of, of Utah. As goes Utah Valley, so will go the state. And I'd like to think that as goes the state, so will go the nation. Thank you for having us.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your time. All right. We're now at item number three of our agenda here, and this is the time when we have an open session for public comment. Any items that are not currently listed on the agenda, those that are, might be able to present something here. All right. See none. Are we covered then? We'll move forward to agenda, on the agenda, item number four, our council reports, and I'm sure there's a lot, it's a busy time right now, so this...
Busy.
Yes, it is. Let's see, Randy, you ready to kick it off?
Yes, I've left off my notes at home, so I'm going to go from a slight disadvantage here. Just wanted to say memorial...
here. Just wanted to say Memorial Day was awesome. We had a wonderful turnout, even with the rain. Marilyn, Marilyn.
Marilyn.
No, I will not do that again.
Just roll it together.
Mayor Carolyn Lundberg did a wonderful, beautiful recitation of Memorial Day. Just so proud of how she represented us. So thank you. I didn't get to express how wonderful your remarks are, but thank you. Again, we were blessed with a beautiful rendition of God Bless the USA. It was just, the whole event, chief, your department just did a beautiful job. I know I've been able to speak with you personally about this, but it was a beautiful day. We were able to have the kickoff event for our youth council, who were being able to meet for this first time and be able to assist. And are very timid, but they'll get over that way. Some of the elderly and having a place of to sit. And it was wonderful to watch them kind of bloom and get to know each other a little bit. So that was a fun event with our Memorial Day, which again was so beautiful. I attended the CERT training for the, on the leadership level. These individuals will be then going on, and next month, to start to train the individuals who are going to do the more vast portion of the CERT certification. And they're doing a good jo, a great job. Wasn't able to visit with Kelly about this before. She's been out of town. But Angie Dickinson, Hendrickson, boy, that's a, my tongue is really tied without my notes. Hendrickson did a wonderful job leading that. And looking forward to all the great things that'll be able to contribute to Linden as an organization. I know there's one more thing on my list, but it's sitting at my house, on my desk. As a matter of side note, I would like to maybe bring up a discussion, I mean, bring up a topic that we can discuss at a later time. And it's an interesting one I just kind of fell onto the other day. Everyone knows that I own a golf cart. Well, in 2020, the Utah State Legislature passed the ability for golf carts to be, I wouldn't call them street legal, but legal on the streets is probably a better way to put it, in municipalities if they so choose to adopt that. It was HB 184. There's, I believe, Woodland Hills and Elk Ridge were the ones that kind of spurred that on so that they could have that. Basically, what it does is it takes it, so a golf cart can be used similar in the fashion that you would be using a bicycle. So it would be kind of under that same kind of guideline. I think maybe it'd be a good thing for us to look at with, for individuals in the community that have one, so that we can decide whether we want to have some ways to encourage it and regulate it at the same time. I would hate to encourage it and have children on it. What it basically says, if I've understood, and we will let the legal team decide how this comes across. But basically, what you get to do is say, if you have a driver's license, then you can be on this. It would keep children from riding them on streets. But it'd be very typical, very similar to having the use of a bicycle. But it would have a little bit of opportunity for if it was being used inappropriately for the police department to educate to do it in a different way. But if that's something that the council and mayor would attain, maybe we could ask council to look into that. Maybe we could talk about it in a future date. That's just kind of a thought I had. So with gas prices going up, I know it's not the biggest thing, but it does keep a little bit of tooling around town. You can only do it on twenty-five mile an hour roads. There's a lot of caveats. But it's also, it's less up to the municipalities to decide whether to embrace that or not, so.
So right now, we have no code. I know several people own golf carts. Are our officers kind of just letting them do their thing? What do we do right now for a golf cart?
Mostly educate.
Yeah.
Remind.
I think they'll probably become more and more popular. I want one, so.
I've seen you golf.
Exactly. I go for the driving, and that's it.
But I think a way to make sure it's safe and legal and appropriate, and then a way for the officers to encourage people to use them the right way.
Well, certainly you have your razors that are street legal, and some other, you know, off-road type vehicles that sometimes can be street legal. So that's an interesting, interesting question to pose.
And you don't, you don't register them. So that's, it's all in that HB 184. So, and I can provide staff some, with the mayor's permission, I can provide staff with some of that information, and maybe we could dive into that and decide.
We'll do some research and come back to you with the discussion items.
The only place that I know that we specifically prohibit them is in our parks.
And trails.
Sure.
In the trails.
We have had some incidents in the past with teenagers driving golf carts in our parks, and it's caused some damage, so.
That's not good.
Okay.
And that's all, but thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Randy.
Uh, just a couple things from PD and from Parks. Commend our chief. He is always so good to communicate. We've had three chiefs, and they've all been great. Chief Brower is so good. He sends me a weekly email. Couple items from this last week, and chief, feel free to jump in. Looked like Orem had an individual shootout with officers. We sent two of our officers who responded and helped make that arrest. Few burglaries up in Dry Canyon Parking Lot. Just keep aware of that. They were able to track him down and return a lot of the property, it sounds like. This one stood out to me, this time with what's going on. Chief proactively reached out to the schools, the administrators at the schools, asking what can we do to be, to be better? How can we better prepare for the next school year? I think we've done a great job there with our, with our schools. And it sounds like we were notified that Alpine School District will be increasing our funding to the city for the school resource officer at Oak Canyon Junior High, starting in twenty-two, twenty-three year. So all good things from the chief. Appreciate him. He's got, yeah, appreciate all you do, chief. Parks and Rec, we had the ribbon cutting for the Splash Tacular. And I gotta say, how many cities have a mayor that are gonna ride the inaugural ride on the Splash Tacular in the rain, in fifty-degree weather? Had the opportunity to ride the slide as well. My kids loved it.
You did it.
Little Miss Linden, Parks and Rec staff. And it's great. It's awesome. I think, you know, we've talked in the past about keeping interest in the park and keeping revenues flowing by adding new things. And I think that this will absolutely accomplish that. So anyways, really fun and really exciting stuff. And I think that's all I have.
Excellent. In relation to the pool, in my meeting this morning with Linden Days Committee, Alan mentioned that we're probably the only pool in the country that has, is open because of the staffing issues that they are having with lifeguards. But I don't know if that's, of course, that's not true. But a lot of the cities are struggling with getting employees, and we're fully staffed and doing a really good job there, so. Meeting with them this morning, the committee is incredible. Jamie Jacob, Wade, Alan, and Heath. We had about an hour and a half, two-hour meeting this morning regarding Linden Days. It's well on its way to being successful again this year. Couple things for us to know, they still want us to hand out hats at the car show on that Monday, the first. And those have been ordered. And who here, at this point, knows that they'll be available that evening, just so I know?
I'm planning on it.
Planning on it.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, great.
There are also some awards that are traditional. There's the mayor award, there's the council award, and there's three or four others that will need to be determined that evening. The ice cream social on Tuesday. I'm so grateful that they've gone away from the hard-packed ice cream. I remember four years ago, I couldn't open my hands the next day very well because of the tension in my muscles.
Come on, Poppy.
So they're using a product called Cool Beads, and I believe they used that last year and was successful. It is a highly expensive item. So I'm looking to my, some of my suppliers to see if we can get that product cheaper and then reduce our costs there. So I'll know in the next day or so on that. There was a question about the fish experience on, in Friar Park. Concerned about what might be portrayed as a drought year. And we don't even know what July and August is gonna be like, as far as drought. But we flood that park so that we can put fish in it and have that, that event. But I was told that the majority of that water will be reclaimed again, and it's secondary water. But this, the image of doing that, and residents may be thinking that we're wasting water without educating. But anybody have a concern with that event in a drought year where we're going to retain most of that water?
Last year, they, they did not do the water, and they had some alternative activities. And I had a number of residents say, please bring that back next time. That's...
I thought that worked real well last year.
I, I kind of think if you go ahead and do that, then you could also have a water conservation station where people could ask questions and have their knowledge increased about what their city's doing and...
I should clarify. People said, bring back the real fishing experience.
Yes.
The real one.
Right.
Yeah, with the water and the fish.
And I meant, if they have questions.
Jake, we've got kids that age. These are, these are champion Huck Finn fishermen.
Not the alternative pretend fishing.
Yeah, no, I, I thought they did a good job last year of providing a lot of events, alternative events, per se. Fishing's hard in that it's hard to catch them. I don't think anyone ever catches one with a real fishing rod. It seems to be with your hands, but...
That's the fun of it.
That, that is the fun of it, part of it, so.
Well, the intent is to have them fish with their hands for the first ten minutes and then use rods if they...
And then they do nets last.
I think it's the reverse of that. I think they were thinking about doing it, reverse, just for the experience. But that is still being clarified. But the staff said that we will retain the majority of that water, so I don't think there's a concern. It's just a matter of an image of what we're sharing with the residents. But we'll move forward with that. The parade, we, we need to find something for us to ride on, whether it be a vehicle, a hay wagon, or any suggestions.
What did you all think last year of the individual heritage cars? Did you like that? Or would you like to be on something together?
I loved the car I was in.
The car was way fun.
The cars were cool.
It was awesome. But it doesn't matter. Whatever is convenient and easy to do.
If it's easier to just get one vehicle and we all ride, then that's...
Pat Hanson is part of that club.
Don't need to make it hard.
And I can give you his contact information.
And then finally, the breakfast will be held in the station over here, and chief and, and police will, our fire will also be taking on that responsibility and...
At the Public Safety Building?
Yes.
Yep. We're gonna change it from the mayor's breakfast to the fireman, police, first responder breakfast. And then all of the youth police council kids will be tied in and helping with that as well, so.
Do we still get to cook?
No.
Uh, no. They're gonna do all the cooking.
We're gonna have you over here doing the...
You need to come teach them how to do the pancakes, so.
The regatta.
His are masterpieces, yeah.
Anyway, that should be a popular event. But we, of course, in the past, we had the five K associated with it over here. And so we need to just make sure that we advertise that well enough so that we get attendance this year, since it's a new venue. So that's all I have.
Thank you so much, Daryl. Really quickly, tomorrow, there's supposed to be a Welcome to Summer Party Parks and Rec is putting on over at Friar Park. It's gonna be the big bubble machine, face painting, popsicles for kids, free to the public. And then here on your desk, I, Mary and I attended the Real Estate Symposium Annual Report by Collier's Event last week. She took some amazing notes. She can share a lot of things with you about. So this is just sort of a look at what's happening right now in the state. Some of the comments were, you know, maybe we're gonna see some easing off nationwide. But right now, Utah is still going really strong. Not sure that we'll, you know, we may have things level, but not necessarily dip. And right now, all the, some of the feedback that I've heard from different developers and brokers and whatnot is that things are still moving full steam ahead. There's no easing off yet here in Utah. Mike, Michael Florence and I attended ICSC. I'm gonna let him kind of give a report on that. It was really incredible. Just, it was amazing. We were able to meet some great, make some great connections, learn a lot of great things. Working with a key developer right now that has the property under contract there on the west side. So hopefully, we can really start to collaborate and coordinate some fantastic things towards that area vision plan that, that we've been working on for a number of years. I attended the Freedom Festival, prayer breakfast, mayor's prayer breakfast last week. There was also, some of you may have attended sometimes Hope of America. Those were two really fantastic events. There's a whole slate of things that are happening right now, all the way up through the month of July. You can go to their website and see some of those events they're holding. It's a really fantastic program. I did meet with both of our hospital community liaisons with Intermountain Healthcare and Mountain Point Medical, and just talking with them about kind of sort of their healthy initiatives within the community, quality of life, and even our economy very much is affected and impacted by a lot of those issues. And so they've, they've both stepped up and said with our new upcoming farmers market that's gonna kick off in July, our Linden Sunset Farmers Market, they'll probably have some things for the community and the youth, whatnot, there. And possibly at Linden Days, they might want to tie in. So I'll get with you, Daryl, on that. Memorial Day was wonderful. Our officers, our chief, all the recreation staff that come and set that up. And then we had our youth police academy kids, our new youth council, really did a fantastic job. Really excited about that. I had one of the moms say to me, okay, now really, no, really put them to work. So I think we're gonna have a great year with them. Just another heads up on our sister city here. Pleasant Grove is starting their Strawberry Day celebrations this Saturday throughout the following week. You hopefully got, yeah, should have gotten a mailer on that. So they have a lot of great things going on there. The Memorial Day Pool Opening, I recommend all of you try the slide. It is super fun. Council members, the water's warm, the tunnel has laser lights. It's a blast. So that was a lot of fun to help just get to participate in that. And the Provo Airport opening, I think we talked about that last time a little bit. That's really gonna be an impactful amenity here within our county. A lot of great things happening there. Mayor Kafusi, and talking with her, you know, they were able to build that in combination with the county without going into debt, which is pretty amazing for the cost of that. So there's a lot of flights that are gonna start being available to the public. It's gonna really kind of change the dynamic here and as the valley grows.
What timeline is that?
It's open. Yeah, they, they've opened it. So there's a couple carriers now that are opening more legs to, you know, some pretty significant cities, New York, Houston, you know, Texas, all throughout. You can kind of see where those are at. So a lot of exciting things happening this summer. That's, we'll have our own Linden Days coming up, really exciting. We're last, but not least, out of all the city productions and celebrations that go on. So I'll defer to you now, Mike.
Great, thank you. Well, I would like to say honestly that I would like to have been here during all the Memorial Day celebrations, but I would be not telling the truth. Spent ten glorious days in Newport Beach, California.
Sorry-not-sorry, huh?
Yeah, sorry-not-sorry. But it sounded like it was very successful. And the weather was a lot better there than it was here, just so you'll know. So I have a granddaughter that is now working for the Linden Pool. She's a lifeguard, and she's pretty excited about that. So I've yet to see her in action, but I, I will see her soon. So a couple, couple of things. The gentleman from Low Book Sales reached out to me, I'll see Eric, is that his name? Eric? Yeah. Eric reached out to me and was concerned about the spacing on the street, on the lights that they had to put up, and wondered if there's anything that we could do. I think the code calls for a hundred feet apart. And he was just sort of saying that's, you know, that's probably a little bit too close. And after checking with the community development, and that's, that's the code. We'd have to actually change the code to, to do anything to accommodate them. And I suggested that by the time we did that, if we decided to do it, it would be way down the road, and it probably wouldn't even be worth pursuing at this time. So they indicated that they're getting very, very close to starting that project. So that is good news. Appreciate that. I want to talk to you, Adam, maybe off the, off the grid. We talked about the garbage pickup along 2000 West there. I've, I've got a thought. I think we had a little bit of money appropriated, but I've got a thought. I've been reaching out to some folks, maybe do it as a fundraiser or something, if we could make certain that we had appropriate supervision and, and equipment and so forth. But that's, that seems to be about the way we're gonna do it. No one else seems to be too interested in, in doing that. So let's see, what else? I think that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Lots of good things going on. Appreciate always working, being part of this council. All right, thanks. Lots of good things going on. Appreciate always working, being part of this council. Some of you may have had this as well, and it'll be item number eight, but the secondary water meter has been installed in my house, very professionally done, happy with the work. It'll be interesting to see as those results start to come in and see if I start curbing my water usage. I'm gonna pay tribute to our police and paramedics, uh, after we had the awards dinner for the police about two hours later. A neighbor of mine was in need of their services. He passed away, but to watch them and their professional courteous, I, I was just, it was a very sad, traumatic time, but to see them in action, uh, some of the guys I had just sat at the table with earlier, they were there, but tough situation, but proud of our police force, proud of our paramedics. So, they get to do a lot of really difficult, difficult things, and that's a important thing. I want them to know my appreciation for what they do and how well they do it, so.
Was that the gentleman that lived next door to you?
Yeah, two doors, two doors away. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. Administrator's report.
You know, everything on there, I'm gonna let you read that. Just a reminder, mayor, that you, we have the newsletter listed as you for this next month, so. If you can get that to Care, or Kathy by the last week in June.
Got it.
Um, then a couple other announcements there, some dates for events coming up. Um, that is all I have. Thank you.
All right. Uh, anything to report from our staff? Okay. All right, we'll move forward to item number six then. This is the approv- approval of the minutes. And any review, any comments?
I have no adjustments.
Okay.
I'll make a motion if nobody has anything.
All right. All right.
I'll make a motion to approve for the minutes of May second of twen- twenty twenty, do you, that's, is that correct?
May sixteenth.
May sixteenth.
Yeah, it was wrong on the first one.
Yeah, sorry, May sixteenth.
All right, we have a motion by council member Powell.
Second.
Seconded by council member Van, Van Broderick. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, then we will move forward to item number seven. This is the consent agenda. Uh, these are items that do not require public comment, uh, or discussion, um, can be approved by a single motion, so we have a couple of those here.
Mayor, I do have concerns about, um, B, so I would ask if we could separate this, um, A from B, move along so that we can maybe just approve A, and maybe I can just give a few comments on, um.
Certainly.
On B. So make a motion to, to, I guess we make a motion to then separate those? Is that how that works?
You, you can do that, yes.
All right, very good. So moved.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, second, seconded, um, by Daryl. Mag will be all in favor to separate items A and B in the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? Okay, all right, so we'll go.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda item A as presented.
I had a question. What were the, were there changes?
We, we.
We're just gonna separate them.
We just separated them, and now we're just gonna do A.
So they can be discussed and handled separately.
No, no, I understand that.
On the liaison assignments.
I'm talking on the liaison assignment.
So the updates, um, Daryl's received an ecclesiastical calling that conflicted with planning commission, and so the mayor has asked council member Broderick to serve as the planning commission liaison, and Randy as the CERT liaison. And so those were the two updates on this, so.
Okay.
All right, any other questions?
Just for the record, I pled with Van to give me something off of his, uh, assignments, but he said.
We'll see how it goes.
He'd rather do all of that than Linden Days, so.
That's a big one.
That's a good point.
Maybe a future year, uh, you can do a newsletter article for me.
I'll give you a rough draft.
I like it. Okay, all right, so.
We have that motion, I guess, then, huh?
We have that motion.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor of resolution item number twenty-two, dash, five, dash, R, updating the mayor and council liaison assignments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. That is unanimous. All right, moving on to item number B.
Okay. So I just have some questions and concerns as I, you know, usually, and on this one, it just has a concern, um, concerning element to me. When I was reading through that and on page twenty-eight of our staff packet, section three, at the very bottom, it says, section three, um, and then three again, it says, "The city may receive a formula allocation under the ESG program only through urban, the urban county." Going through that, it lists that a second time. I'm very uncomfortable that this time, having read through how we've done these, um, type of programs, these interlocal agreements, to now have an ESG, a mentioning of ESG into this program. I am very uncomfortable with doing this without more information. Um, what the penalties are, there's just not enough information for me to be involved in anything with environmental, social governance. Do we have any information about that or thoughts?
I don't have any information other than what's in this, Randy.
Yeah, okay.
Who prepared this agreement?
This was prepared by the county, and, and they are following HUD recommendations. I was just looking to see if this was in the prior agreement that we've already committed to.
No, this is a new agree.
It was not.
This, this comes through the, um, executive mandate that happened last year, and in, and I know our, our state treasurer, Morrell Oaks, has taken Utah, um, along with twenty-three other states, and has taken them, notice to the federal government of anything that's ESG related, um, in regards to the employee, um, what do I wanna say? The retirement package and how they invest, and how the federal government is now coming in and usurping what is nor- the normal standard procedures of how we have our particular policies and procedures that we do in the framework of the constitution, and Morrell Oaks comes in and he says, point blank, he said, "This is now becoming more of a political stance versus our typical way of governance." And I just really, this to me is coming in in the back door, and I just, I don't know how we continue on in getting availability, availability to access some of these grants, but not without the, the stranglehold or the, the tools that potentially could be so damaging for not just our, our, our community, but our society, um, with, um, this, this ESG.
It does list it in the prior agreement right here on, this is on page.
From last year, from two years ago?
Page thirty-four has the same sentence. The city may receive this allocation.
Randy, when I'm pulling up ESG under the, the HUD program, it's referring to the emergency solutions grant, not environmental.
Thank you for that. That's the clarification. I was hoping for something that was gonna solve this, so that I didn't have to.
Yeah, this is engaging in, in providing emergency services for homeless, improving, uh, the number of emergency shelters for homeless and things along those.
Now, is that, is that spelled out in that then?
Yeah, yeah, not in this, but in their ESG solutions guidelines that HUD publishes. That's what I'm looking at right now. And so, this is the Emergency Solutions Grants Program authorized under the Department of Housing, under CFD fourteen, two thirty-one. So this is a, this is a HUD program.
So the ESG is an acronym that is not the other acronym, is that correct?
Yes, that's what I'm, that's my understanding.
Can, can we enter that in?
Can we enter that into our, our agreement with that?
As a clarification.
Did you say the Emergency Solutions Grant? Just put that in a parentheses behind the ESG. I think that's completely appropriate.
Yeah, the original on this was twenty sixteen, so this really predates, I think, anything that you've mentioned, so.
Yeah, I saw it in there twice. I didn't see it was, like, the one that, um, uh, Ellerson put out, not Scav- I never say his name right. Skavit, Skavat, how do we say it?
Sakovich.
Sakovich, thank you very much, and then I'll say it wrong the next time, Sakovich. Um, yeah, I didn't see it in that version of, that, um, that Commissioner Ellerson put out, so thank you for that clarification. That's what I was hoping for, something that was more benign, so.
Yeah, I would like to see the parentheses in there, 'cause I'm with Randy on this a hundred percent, if they start doing that. But I'm gonna be a difficult one.
Okay, very good. Thank you for.
Thank you.
That vigilance. Uh, where shall we take it from here? Shall we go ahead and adopt it with that clarification that that is included? Then staff can follow through on that, or do we wanna continue it?
We can ask for clarification from the county, but we are under a timeline on this, where they have to have it adopted by the city soon. It was, um, June seventeenth, and so it's coming up very quick. We've received hundreds of thousands, maybe millions, from the CD, CDBG project program.
Well, that's why I.
And I'm.
I was really.
I understand your concern. I'm just letting you know that we've been very much benefited by the HUD program for this grant opportunity, so our community center would not be what it is today without this, so.
Thank you so much, Brian, for that clarification. All right, so.
You know, Randy, I, I'm just a little hesitant that they're gonna say, hey, this is our approved form. We're not gonna mess with it, but I, as I'm reading through this, as it's talking about the, the definition of receiving an ESG program only through the urban county designation.
Right.
I'm feeling very comfortable that we're going to, if it were to, someone was to try to say, oh, no, this applies to the environmental governance section. I, I'm very confident that we would be able to, to shoot that down and say, no, this is expressly referring to the ESG program through the HUD and the urban county designation, and I would, I feel very confident in that language. I think, I think we should authorize the, the resolution to ask us to see if we can get that designation, that clarification put in.
Okay.
Especially since those acronyms are now interchange, you know, there's some interchangeable meaning there potentially.
We don't want that to follow us, and remind me, em- emergency solutions?
Yes, Emergency Solutions Programs.
Okay.
I think that, that urban county piece really clarifies, 'cause there, I don't think ESG, as you're referring to it, has an urban county piece to it. I think that for me helps me clarify, hey, this is talking about emergency solutions grant program.
And that's important to note, but I wouldn't say that I would use just the urban, um, just the cow- urban county because I don't know where the tentacles of this program goes.
Sure.
And it's too much, it, it, it's just too big, and so that's why I'm grateful for, um, our council wanting to have this clarification. That means a lot.
When we use the initials, BLM. I still mostly think of the Bureau of Land Management, but it just doesn't today's day and age anymore.
Doesn't ring a thing at all.
Can be both. Well, either.
The things highlighted in yellow on page twenty-five and twenty-six are the only things changed from the prior two agreements that we've approved in the past.
And they may very well real- recognize that, you know, updating their language may be applicable anyway if this was pointed out.
We can ask.
At, at least at one point, let us know what the acronym was or is, so, in that document, some sort of a, a key.
What's your timing on this, Adam? Is this gonna screw us up if we?
June seventeenth.
I, I would recommend you authorize the mayor to sign this with the request that they clarify that definition. Yeah.
So how would you like the motion to be made? Just approve it with those conditions or?
Or, if they say no, but they clarify that it is not what you're concerned about, is that acceptable?
No, if, if it's not that, if it's not what we're, are hoping it is, then I would not be.
No, that's not, that's not what I asked.
If they verbally say.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So if, if they say, "We're not going to amend the agreement, but it does not stand for the environmental thing that you're concerned about," it is what Brian mentioned, are you?
I guess I wouldn't need them to amend it, but I'd want some sort of written statement to that effect, that it does not mean that.
Even an email.
We can bring you clarification on that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, very good. Is that, yeah, any of, any further questions in regards to that, any concerns? Okay, great. All right, then I would entertain a motion.
I'll tell you staff at it. I, uh, unless you want to, Randy, I don't wanna.
I'll let you go ahead. No, I've parked the mic enough.
I would, um, motion that we approve interlocal, or consent agenda item B, interlocal agreement addendum with Utah County for CDBG program participation, conditional upon clarification, uh, that ESG does in fact stand for, uh, the HUD's ESG Emergency Solutions Grant. And if that can be clarification via any written form.
All right, very good.
You all right with that, Adam?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Motion by council member Hoyt, seconded by council member Powell. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good. Okay, thank you. Thank you, staff, for your good advice on that. All right, we're moving on to item on the agenda number eight. This is a review and action for a bid award for secondary water meters. We will be considering reviewing the bid award for this.
So Juan, our public works director, Juan Garrido, uh, has received three bids, um, for companies that are sole source providers for certain types of water, secondary water meters, um, with the city's required mandate through the state that we have to install meters, citywide. This is part of that project. Um, we are recommending that the type of meters that have been selected and the local sole source provider is Peterson Plumbing Supply. Um, perfect purchase of these meters is four hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and fourteen and eighty-five cents. We would recommend approval of that award to Peterson Plumbing Supply.
It clearly begs the question, though, how could they leave so much on the table unless the other two bids are just absolutely pie in the sky, which is very possible, but the difference between the low bid and the second to low bid is.
They're technically different meters, um, brands, and so if you look at his, his documents, um, so a couple of them. Let me scroll down here.
I, I did look through that. I just didn't notice that they were different ones.
Yeah, the, the Zenner is what, what we've chosen to go with, but, uh, there's.
All brass fittings and all that.
Yeah, and the only supplier of that specific model, um, was different than the, the Badger series that he bid out from Hydro Specialties, and then from Mountain Sand, Mountainland Supply, the Census.
If he's happy.
Series, so, yeah, we're, we're good.
Adam, if I could make one quick comment. Had the opportunity to meet with Juan and our legacy water users this last week. A group of, uh, very well attended, thirty plu- maybe around thirty people showed up, um, which were those individuals who, who felt like they had given up their water shares in exchange for free water forever. And Juan has done a great job of helping them understand, uh, where it came from, uh, what's happening, and I think a lot of their anger shifted from this current council to the state who is mandating this, uh, uh, secondary water metering, and, um, but I think Juan does a great job of explaining to people, uh, the why behind it, and they, they really all came together, and with the exception of one or two who were a little bit frustrated, there were some, hey, just give us our water shares back now, type of comments, but for the most part, I'd say the, the grand majority left, understanding where we're coming from, understanding that the city council, uh, you know, recognizes and appreciates these legacy water owners, and we're gonna do our best to try to protect them, um, their, their secondary watering needs, many of them being agricultural rather than aesthetic, uh, that they're, you know, we recognize the importance of that, and we're gonna do the best we can to, to, to help them through this process. You know, I, I said, hey, as, as long as I'm on the council, I'm gonna certainly try that, but recognize that I'm only on the council for three more years. Who, you know, beyond that, who knows? The same way these individuals who made you promises back in the nineties probably shouldn't have been, you know, making promises beyond that, and so they recognize that, and they recognize that the day may come where a council wants to, uh, charge them, whatever that number may be, and, uh, I, I think they recognize that in the end and understood, well, why, so anyways, just wanted to bring that up, 'cause that was a development over the last week. But Juan did a great job.
All right, thank you. Yes, and I think, you know, we've reiterated many times that that's, they are a priority and concern, recognizing to create some way to, you know, work with them, um, in, in a, in a different way from how this is kinda ubiquitously deployed across the city, and, uh, so we do, we do want to value our open space, and, uh, and those that have, you know, agricultural purposes are, it's gonna be really important to help them with that, so thank you for attending that, and I'm sure Juan can share more with us about that. Um, he has a really, um, great plan that kinda takes a very strategic, careful, data-driven approach to the issue, and, uh, we'll, we'll look at that data and counsel together, and, uh, those folks will be definitely top of mind priority to, to find a solution that hopefully. folks will be definitely top of mind priority to, to find a solution that hopefully can be fair for all, so.
You know, while this is state mandated, it's a really good idea. It's a really good way to use our water resources in a better way than we've had. Conditions and times have changed, the drought, the amount of usage, this is a good idea for water management, besides that it's mandated. But I, I think that other part needs to always be mentioned as well.
And I do like the way that we are taking the aspect of how we can personally be educated because of the type of systems that we are getting, so that we can then be able to monitor our own usage on a more timely basis, the whole system that we are trying to implement here.
Right. I was talking with the mayor from Cedar City, and he just said flat out, they just do not have water to deliver in some instances. It is extreme conditions down there for them right now. So, we're in a good spot, we need to be wise stewards, and this is being wise stewards not only of the finite resource of water, we're being wise stewards of taking advantage of grants and funding so that we don't have to put this mandate on the backs of our citizens and raising the taxes and the fees on them to put in this expensive infrastructure. So, really appreciate staff and all their hard work coming to this point, and any other comments or questions in regards to what's being presented?
I'm all over this in favor.
I will say, one last comment for me, is that I'm so grateful that we're making these decisions in our contemporaries times, contemporary times, but I'm also grateful for those who came before us, made it so that we weren't behind the eight ball from twenty years ago. We've got great bones to, to work this system on, so grateful for that.
A few weeks ago, a water meter was installed at my home, and I cannot even tell that they were even hardly there. I noticed that there, there was a big hole, and there was a big pile of dirt. When it was completed, it was to my satisfaction as far as how it should be done, and I'm just conscientious now of my water usage, so.
Yep, and the meters.
Even though I'm not being charged or anything, I'm a little bit more conscientious 'cause someone can see what I'm doing, so.
Well, I'm looking forward to, with the meters also at my house, I'm looking forward to the app and playing with that and learning, you know, watching how that goes, so, it's gonna be fun.
If you're ready, I'll make a motion, unless there's other comment.
Okay, any further question, discussion? All right.
I, I move to approve the bid award for secondary water meters as presented.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Van, seconded by Darrell, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, passes unanimously. All right, item number nine next, we have a concept review. I'd like to invite Mr. Phil Holland to join us here at the table. This is going to be a concept review, no decision being made tonight, just a concept being presented with feedback desired for the Meadows at four hundred west, four hundred north. Thank you for being here, Mr. Holland.
Thank you.
Awesome. So, like the mayor said, yes, this is just for general feedback. Phil has been to the planning commission, he was at the planning commission on May twenty-fourth, and I included a bit of a review for you in the staff reports. So, the Holland Group, Phil's company, approached staff about putting in thirty-two townhomes in eight small, single-family homes on that Gary Thornton farm property between Gilman Drive and, here, I'm going to just show you, Gilman Drive and Lake, Gilman Lane and Lakeview Drive. And I wanted to point out a couple of things before I let Phil take the stage. So, the zoning on this property, as you can see in this zoning map, is half commercial general and half R one-twenty. And at this time, a whole new zone would have to be created in order to allow this use in this area. We, like says in your staff report, we would not be using the PRD overlay for this area. And the general plan land use map, here it is, does show this area as completely commercial. It is, oh my goodness, it is right next to this second blue, blue circle, right here, it shows it as completely commercial. And the street master plan does require two roads in this parcel. One is the four hundred north, four hundred west connection, which will have a sixty-six foot right-of-way, this yellow line coming down. The other is, the other road will branch up to Gilman Lane with a fifty-foot right-of-way. As you read in your packet, the city is responsible for the connection to the State Street intersection, four hundred north, through the Fellowship Bible Church property. Feedback from the planning commission generally seemed to come to the consensus that the main effect of this development won't be as much the use of the townhomes, but this actual required road connection. In regards to detention basin, there needs, according to the storm drain master plan, we do require some type of detention basin in this area, specifically a one-point-five acre detention basin, which staff has related to developer already. According to our engineers, anything less would not work for our needs, or it would just be too deep in relation to the, yeah, anyways. Finally, the lot sizes range from about four hundred and, sorry, not four hundred, forty-three hundred square feet to ten thousand five hundred square feet. And feedback from the planning commission was that the townhome designs were suitably aesthetic, and, but there could be a case for more, more open space within the site plan. Other planning commission feedback, like I said, is in your staff report, but I'll turn the time over to Phil.
Yeah, thank you very much for your time. It's good to be here with you, and I'm glad that we have the opportunity just to discuss an item. I welcome your feedback, I appreciated the planning commission a couple of weeks ago, and I had quite a few different notes that I took away from that meeting. So, rule number one in real estate, aside from location, 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 is check the general plan. And that is the fir, first box I check. Is what I want to do consistent with that general plan? And in this case, it's not. And so, it didn't check the first box. Then I went to the second box and said zoning. Okay, so, there's a commercial aspect of it, there's an R one-twenty aspect of it. That's gonna be really difficult to develop any sort of either commercial or residential project there. And so, that's when my will started to spin. I set up a meeting with staff to try to review, what does this property want to be? I know everybody in land, every, we're all land use experts, but what does the property want to be? And so I had to go on that journey. So let me point out some crucial things that I believe that take place on this property. Number one is the extension of four hundred west that has to come through this property. That notion alone creates a very difficult element in the, the future of this land. A sixty-six, I certainly, as you see it up here, can you guys see it on your screens as well? I certainly would not develop the property as shown. I think the, the why concept, the road coming in off of Gilman and the four hundred west extension, that takes up a lot of the land. But after discussing, discussing this item with city staff, their feeling was, we have to have that corridor go through there from, for future transportation. And so, with that, I created a plan. I submitted that to staff, and they, and rightfully so, I try to be consistent with what staff would like. I don't want to press anything hard upon a city. I want to look at this and say, like I said earlier, what does this land want to be? First of all, commercial, it's not viable commercially. I developed commercial property throughout the Wasatch Front, I also developed residential property throughout the Wasatch Front. The problem commercially is that it does not have crucial frontage to State Street. Now, I am also buying a property to the north of Gilman Lane that will remain commercial, and I think is a pretty good commercial corner. And so, my thought is, and this is what I would love your feedback on, is from a general pa, plan perspective, it calls out commercial. And so, what's in front of us today is, yeah, is this viable commercially moving forward? A second thing I noticed when I originally was looking at the property is, to the west, you have large, single-family, really nice homes. And so, this property is also a great transitional, or could be a great transitional zone. Instead of being commercial, it could be exactly like I've set it up on the site plan, single family, and then townhomes, and then the commercial. In the staff report, you see that the proposed development has a density of six point six units per acre, which is not very much. Now, that's debatable, and, you know, that's for a different day. But in my mind, a medium density is somewhere between six to twelve, higher density throughout the state and other places, ranges up from twenty units per acre on up from there. Lower density is probably below six. So I think what I'm saying here, and by the way, I, I recognize that everybody has their definition of what makes a property dense. The detention basin as well, the meeting I was in Public Works immediately said, this would be a great spot for a regional detention basin. You heard Mary say that they would like an acre and a half, I could easily accommodate that. So I left that meeting a couple of months ago thinking, yeah, I think I could provide a clear vision, which helps the city, it helps the neighbors around it, it takes into some of the, the transportation vision that is already put into place here in Linden, and it works for me. And so when you create that environment, you say, okay, well, let's go see if it works with the planning commission and the city council. And so, just till I end, or when I end, I'd wanna kind of show you a couple of slides of what these properties might look like. So you can see on the top, these lots, the single-family ones, the one is about a quarter acre, and I think it's more designed for what we traditionally call a patio home, smaller yard, although ten thousand square feet is not a small yard. But you can see those on the left-hand side, it would be more of that style of home, maybe somebody wants to downsize, and so we've provided that use. And then the next slide down is more of a front-loaded, two-car garage townhome. We've all driven up and down I fifteen, and we've seen, you know, three-story townhomes and apartments, and it's, and I didn't want to introduce that, I have that product type, but I don't think it's the, the right place to introduce that. And so these are two-story, two-car garage, the driveway is, can have additional parking. This works and lives like a, a single-family home, it's just attached. I got really good in, input from the planning commission in regards to product type that Linden residents might also enjoy, and so those are some of the things that we'll continue to review and look at. So, now, I'd love to hear your feedback. What do you think? How do you view this property? I think the planning commission, one of the big takeaways, Mary mentioned this, that it wasn't the housing type or the use, it was more, how is the, the public in this area going to view the transportation corridor, creating new traffic patterns? And I think that's probably true, but that might be inevitable. So, with that said, I just wanted your input, I'd love to hear it.
All right, council, do you have any questions, perhaps, about this concept? All right.
I think there's a lot of thought being, this is a lot for us to try to chew through. A lot of aspects, of course, the transportation is always the paramount thing for what we've looked at in this area. We dealt with this kind of a typical, a, a similar animal in the last couple of years, and I won't be able to express all my con, all my concerns or thoughts in one shot right here, but I'll start with saying that I don't know how comfortable I am in trying to add more residential. Residential that you are saying is a medium for us would be high. This is certainly in our high realm for Linden, your six to twelve units. To try to craft some sort of a new zone, new use, at this point, I'm not really, really in love with all of this, so I, I'm, I'm gonna have to wait to hear a little bit more from my fellow council members for their thoughts.
Well, here we go again.
Here's the other side of the coin.
Yeah, well, I, I think we, I'm sorry?
Oh, I'm just talking to Jay.
No, no, that's fine. One, one thought is, it's certainly, I, I agree with you, it doesn't lend itself to commercial development. I, I hope that's something we can all agree on. If, I, I know that the eight-point-six units or eight-point-four units that we did for the Norton property was, was hard fought, but I, I fail to see how six-point-six could be that much, could even be equated to the eight-point-four per acre. Again, everybody's got their definition of high density, but it's six-point-six to me is, is not high density, especially if it's built correctly and appropriately. Yeah, I, I just, again, don't, don't understand why, how thirty-four, well, actually, if you count the, the eight, so we're talking forty-two, forty-two housing units is going to really change the way that Linden does business. The road's gonna go through there regardless, regardless of how it's developed, and I, I fail to see how it's gonna be developed any other way, except residential, unless I'm not seeing something clearly. I, I'm not suggesting that I'm especially enamored with the way it's presented, I mean, I know there's some zoning issues. I mean, it is a, it is a stretch to have to not only change the zoning, but have to change the ordinance and, and have to basically start from scratch, which can be done, but I'll tell you this, given experience, it's likely not going to be a, a short process. I think you can understand and appreciate that. But once again, I, I voiced my concern that it's inevitable that we need housing that is at a price point where it wouldn't necessarily, necessarily wouldn't be low-income housing, but it might be considered moderate to upper housing, which I think we definitely need. We need to be able to have a place where our children can afford to come. We need to have a pla, places where the aging population can sell their homes and their half-acre lots to those who want to buy those, who want a half-acre. So I think that serves two, two markets. It's hard to generalize, but I know that of two individuals right now that have contacted me and want half-acre lots desperately in Linden, but they're just not to be had, unless someone vacates a residence or a property that they have now. Many of our elderly aging population, this kind of housing would be ideal for them. It would make perfect sense in my mind, if that's what they desired, that they could sell their home and their half-acre for a very, a premium, and then come into a place like this where all of their needs as far as upkeep and maintenance and lawn and lawn care and so forth would be taken care of, and could pay cash and still have a, you know, something to provide for their, their living expenses and so forth. So, just right out of the shoots, I don't, six-point-six doesn't scare me, it may end up being a, a different number, but I, I think we need it, it's inevitable. I, I think to try to stop additional housing to go into Linden is, is, dare I say it, misguided in some ways. Respect all opinions. Respect all opinions. But again, I think, I think members of the council know how I feel in regards to making housing available. Yeah, so that's what I need to say. Thank you.
Well, I did want to clarify that 6.6 units per acre, that's for the entire site. So that does include...
That includes the detention basin. I remember reading that. Yeah.
Do you have a number without the detention basin?
Yeah, I think that's in the staff report.
It's one acre, so probably a total acre.
Well, if it was 1.5 as suggested, what would that?
That's what we would like to, but I don't think that's what's being offered. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Phil, you mentioned that you could possibly make that 1.5 instead of 1 on the retention.
Yeah, there's going to be some gyrations, obviously.
Yeah, and this...
But I think in principle, what I was speaking to was in just the concept itself, the principle of how the property could be used, should be used. That's what I was addressing.
From what I understand from staff, both engineering and planning department, you know, this layout, there's a couple of things that would not entirely work just yet. There would have to be some more conversations. But I think speaking to the bigger issues, maybe what's more helpful to you for counsel to answer is, number one, are we okay with allowing residential instead of commercial on that, you know, that easterly half? Or third, that's a question maybe that we should address first of all. Is allowing this to become residential as an entire piece? How does counsel feel about that? And then we can discuss, okay, yes or no, then what kind of residential or what density? I think maybe if we separate those issues, that might be helpful.
Will you clarify, Carolyn, what, or Mayor, the portion that you were...
So if you look at the zoning map right now, what was...
That particular map right there, will you, can you point to which quadrant?
It's going to be the piece right behind Los Romanos.
Right, so right now, essentially where the townhomes are, there's a line, we have the, you know, that's zoned commercial currently. So that's what we're talking about is, he's spoken to, hey, there's not really a viable commercial use here, you know, behind Los Romanos, behind the Bible Church. So that's, I would just like to pose that question to you all. Allowing housing on this piece versus keeping it commercial for part of it and residential for part of it? How do you feel about that? Just that first issue.
My initial thought is I'm okay with it. I don't know why. If Los Romanos were to burn down, someone might want that corner and have a bigger parcel to make a bigger business. But my initial reaction is it's okay with me.
Being residential?
Yes.
I think, oh, go ahead. Well, again, I have no statistics to back this up. But my sense is, let's say for argument's sake, that we do carve off a piece behind Los Romanos and say that's going to be commercial. My sense is, depending on what kind of commercial it is, we would probably have to deal with more traffic coming in and out on a regular basis than we would if it were residential. Again, I have no statistics to back that up. But my sense is, again, depending on, you know, you get someone come in and say it's a restaurant. Someone comes in, they eat for an hour, hour and a half, two hours, and then they're in and then someone else comes and takes their place. I think you'd see a lot more traffic movement if it were commercial than if it were residential. Just my thought.
Mary, scroll up one page to just the map.
Zoning.
That map right there is fine. If you can zoom in on that. As I thought, what could go in there that would be commercial? What would be considered similar? I thought of that Mill Haven, the current Mill Haven location, is maybe a similarity to what this would look like. I also thought of Main Street behind, right by there, but Castle Park, maybe an office. But I think that it could be. Is that the highest and best use? I don't know. And so I think I'm open to some residential there. I think, I don't think that it's an impossibility that you could put commercial there. I think you could find a user, you know, some Class B, Class C office space that could use that. But I don't know that I, that's the sword I'm going to die on if we want to go residential with it, if we found the right residential use. I'd be open to residential there as well.
Okay, Van, your thoughts?
You know, certainly the road requirement and just the shape of this property just causes some unique challenges for sure with how that's set up. And those roads are very important to us. And it's why they're on a road plan. You know, so I would be okay with some residential there for sure. And we've had many discussions on density and what we like to see. And everybody has what they're passionate about. You know, so, you know, we've got that one, the road that comes, what is that, off of 400 north? And then turns around and comes and ties into near Lakeview. That one lot there on the corner, I don't know if that goes away, if it goes to a one and a half acre detention. That's just kind of a, I know the planning commission talked about that. And then just in full disclosure, sometimes having eight townhouses right there in the roads in those individuals is going to make me uncomfortable.
Okay, Randy, the question of allowing this to become fully residential as a piece, contiguous piece?
My only hesitation in turning that corner is then what is the definition of a residential?
Okay, that would be the second part of the discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, certainly we're trying to transition and you've got the, what, the R1, the R20? And, yeah, there's challenges here for sure.
Adam?
Just for clarification, so the current zone map splits this between the R120 and commercial. And the way that, on the general plan, it's shown as commercial. But in the zoning map that Mary's got there, it splits that. And the way that ordinance is written is whatever the lowest intensity use is, if you have a split zone or a parcel, that's what prevails. And so currently, this is zone R120. They could just subdivide this into half-acre lots on the entire land. So housing is already permitted. I just wanted to make sure that's clear.
At R120, right?
Thank you.
Good point, thank you.
One of the questions I have, I don't know if staff has had these conversations, but isn't it correct that Los Romanos currently has an agreement with the Bible Church that they are using what will be future roadway as parking for the restaurant? And Wild Oak.
Not the future roadway, but their parking lot. Which I guess, yeah, there is a small portion of the parking lot. They have an agreement that they can have a share of the parking lot.
They... They're parking right in front of that little church as well, which is what would be taken out by the road. Have there been any discussions about Los Romanos or Wild Oak acquiring more parking space or anything like that? They've had...
That I'm aware of, we have met with the Fellowship Bible Church when the Thornton property went up for sale. And I met with several of their leaders there. And they were interested to potentially acquire some of this land. We gave them the realtor's contact information and left that up to them. So I don't know if they've ever reached out to this individual developer. So we are obligated as a city to give them 12 months, one-year notice from the time we receive an application and approval on that application so that we can contract and remove the building. So removal of the old building is their responsibility.
Did they indicate whether or not they would want 12 months? Or did that even come up?
I don't know. That specifically didn't come up.
Okay.
They're aware of some pending discussions on this.
All right, so if I understand correctly, what you've explained to us, Adam, is this all could become half-acre zoned residential, potentially, without too many issues. So the question is, do we want to, councils want to consider the fact that maybe some of this would be given up as open space for engineering, retention basin area? Would there be any sort of a clustering allowed or that transitional use potentially? You know, do we say, okay, instead of half acre, maybe there can be some quarter acres? Or what's being presented tonight, of course, is, you've all given your response to that. So just trying to help lead the conversation along here. I know we've, any comments about that?
Yeah, I'd like my turn. Appreciate your approach to it. Open-minded, reasonable, rational. I love that and I love when people come in that way. I like the way you look at things. I think I try to do something similar in my own life. Couple of my thoughts, yeah, I could see it going either way, commercial or residential. But I think residential is probably the highest and best use, I would think, but maybe those pieces next to the commercial could go. It doesn't fit our current zoning and ordinances. And I think there's a reason behind that. Those are thought out, well-thought-out zoning and ordinances. Many hours have gone into those. When you put it under contract, I had several residents reach out to me saying, hey, is this the next round of what you did behind Linden Nursery, what you did to the Pony Farm? And I know you guys fought that battle and I fought it without you because I had to abstain every single time. I can tell you that I've already heard from several residents on this, we will be fighting a very similar battle where we are filling this council room time and time again with residents who do not want this. They do not want the density. Specifically, this area of town that has really been that heart of a little bit of country. I think that we would have quite a bit of concerned residents for us to make a brand-new code, a brand-new ordinance. I think that it's a little bit of a stretch. Lastly, I think that it's been said on several occasions that it's too close to State Street to have a good residential development. But I'd just like to point out, if you can go back to that slide, Mary, we have some really, really impressive residential developments, very close to State Street, similar proximity to what this development will be in what Mill Haven's putting in right now, in what's adjacent to this property and what is in the older real estates, all on the same side, all within maybe a quarter mile of this.
Multi-million dollar homes.
Some multimillion and some less.
Right, but I'm just saying that there's a...
But incredible developments. And so I don't know that we can't do incredible developments close to State Street that are residential. I know that it's probably not the most profitable thing for our developers. But I do think that there is potential to have great residential developments close to State Street. I think I would end in that I recognize that you're coming in here saying, I will offer you this at detention basin. That's awesome. We need that. And maybe this isn't, as I've talked to a little bit, maybe it's not the ideal spot for it, but it's pretty close. I know we've fought pretty hard to try to get the adjacent piece. And so I recognize that we need to give up something for that. And I'm open to that, but not to this magnitude. Carolyn and I spoke earlier today. She brought the word townhome fatigue. I do think there's a little bit of that in Linden right now with the two previously approved developments. There's a little bit of townhome fatigue amongst the residents. Heard it a lot during the last election. Heard it a lot during the two that were approved. And so I like to be really clear with developers that come in here because several times we've said, yeah, we're open to residential. And they interpret that as, hey, this is a project you guys are going to go down the road and improve. As it stands today, I don't know that I'm comfortable with townhomes on this site. I'm just not. And so I just want to be very clear on that. You know, in a scenario where you're offering us a detention basin, could I get comfortable with maybe some of these smaller lots? Maybe. I think that's where we could talk. But that's just where I'm at. I try to be as clear and transparent as possible. So I don't want you to waste your time. I don't want to waste ours. That's where I'm at today.
I'll give some input. I'm newly appointed council member, first of the year. So my understanding of the interest in our citizens is probably the least knowledgeable here. So I haven't had an opportunity to knock doors and get a feel from how people feel. But of course, those residents that live around this area are going to probably oppose it. I live up on the bench and I probably wouldn't if I was a citizen living up there. Wouldn't affect me as much. Jake said it well when he made the comment to you, Phil, that we like developers like you. I felt confident in who you are when you sat down and started talking. I haven't felt that with a lot of developers. So I'd like to find a project that will work here on this property that you would oversee. Because I think that's the type of person we want working in our city. You know, my bias is I would like high density here just because I have a restaurant across the street that they'd come and eat at. But my feeling is, and if I were to knock doors, this would probably be highly opposed by most citizens in this city as what it's currently described. A variation of that, I'd probably be in favor of it. I probably am in the middle of the area of, from where Mike's opinion of high density is, this is probably more medium, in my opinion. But I'm still uneducated in the desires of the citizens. And so I'd need to have further input from them to make a final decision.
All right. I think you've heard from everyone then.
Well, I'd also like to add in there because I wanted to hear more from some of my fellow council members. But that would be that if we were to change from the 120, I think the lowest I could probably feel comfortable with is maybe a version of the R112 that we have in your area. So that we bringing it down, of course, out of the 112. But, yeah, I could entertain it down to 112.
Kind of crossed my mind.
Yeah.
Just a couple, thank you very much for your comments. Just a couple of questions. And this is more of a Public Works question, but I am going to pose it and maybe none of you need to answer it. Does this road have to come through? There's been some conversation on, you know, and there's always a misconception because I always try to take credit for building roads. The state builds roads and developers build roads. And the cities have to manage them and take care of them. I've got to build this road. And so, you know, when you look at that and you say, well, could we do some office space here? Immediately, the answer is no. I can't pay for a 66-foot road coming through here. And the other offset road, the road takes up a lot of this property. So that's an important question is, what do I do? I'm required to put all these roads in. Somebody has to pay for them. And so that's ultimately kind of the undertone of why you're seeing this plan in front of you. Somebody has to pay for this road. And I like the idea of me doing that. I'm fine with it. And I think the detention basin is, according to Public Works, a win. They want it anyway. So, but I appreciate, I don't know if I, see, now I got to go back and think, okay, what did the city council really tell me? You guys had some really good points. But if, and maybe this is another question, maybe there's no answer to it. But if 50 people are in this room looking at you saying, okay, re-code, a re-zone, a general plan, in my mind, this is a win. It's going to take us a long time. But this property is going to turn into something. And is that 17 lots on a major road that all of them are backing on to that 66-foot road? If that's the case, we can look at that. So it's just all these things bouncing around that we could potentially do. And when I say we, I'm talking all of us. Because that's the nature of a developer in a city. We've got to figure out what works for everybody. What is it going to be? So let me do some soul-searching and work with staff and maybe get their input to what they heard today. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Adam?
Mayor, if I could, just one more comment to think about long-term. Bus rapid transit has been approved along State Street. And this intersection was identified as a future possible transit stop for that BRT line. As part of that, the state is likely with UTA to require a small-area master plan to look at... to look at what kinds of developments would come in around the transit stop for VRT. That's something that in our general plan update will likely need to be flushed out more over the next few months. And of how we want to approach that, if we want to approach that, so keep that in mind.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil.
All right. Item number 10, we need to recess to the Linden City Redevelopment Agency Meeting, the RDA. This is a public hearing, so I would.
I'll make a motion to.
Thank you very much.
To exit city council to, and to enter into our RDA meeting. Not sure if I said that all right, but I think we know what we all mean.
Okay, motioned by Randy Powell, seconded by Van Broderick. All in favor?
Is it a vote? Is it a vote call to exit the RDA?
To go into a public hearing.
Is it a?
Yeah.
It's a go-in?
And then.
Basically, did change the legislature just for the ordinance on our minutes. We have to identify how everybody votes. We can't just say, you know.
Right, we do the aye, aye, aye.
We have to, we have to identify specifically who votes. So in essence, everything's a roll call now. Kathy might have to double-check on who voted yes and who voted no.
But so far, everybody's been yes, so.
Yeah. But we don't have to do the specific on the recording. I hope to go into it. That's just for closed session.
Okay. All right. We are in a public hearing now, so shall we still do the call-to-order roll call then? Ryan, what's your preference on that?
Yay.
Just, you don't need.
Okay, very good. We'll move forward then. We do have some minutes.
Mayor, I reviewed those and I'm comfortable with them. If no one else has any issues with them, I'll make a motion to approve the RDA minutes of May 16, 2022.
Okay. Motioned by Jake Hoyt, seconded by Daryl McElbie. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Any opposed? All right. All right, I'll turn this over then to our staff and your guest.
Okay, thanks, ma- um, board members.
Marilyn.
Thank you. So wanted to start off, you remember Rob Sant with Louis Young, Robertson and Burningham that's been doing the redevelopment study for us. I, I did want to start with some good news, though. The Kia dealership has closed on the property and so they're the proud owners of six acres over there now. And so, so we are excited for them. So with that, I'll turn the time over to Rob.
Perfect, thanks so much, Mike. Thank you, members of the board. It's always crazy to go board, council, board, council. Happens all the time, but yeah, members of the board. So a lot of these slides will look really familiar for when I was here a few months ago talking about this project. We did add a few, probably eight to 10 slides at the beginning. That's more of, that we do for the public hearing, just as kind of background of what project areas are. So with that, we'll get going. So yeah, so the first thing we're gonna do is kind of just do an introduction to tax increment financing within project areas. Kind of go over the statutory framework, revisions and evolution of project area tools, definition of what tax increment is, how it's used to encourage development, and then what the current financing tool is. So it's, all of the, is governed by Utah Code 17(c), the Community Reinvestment Agency Act. And under the act, agencies are technically allowed to create four project areas. So community development areas, economic development areas and urban renewal areas before 2016. And it's really interesting, right now in St. George, we're helping them create a CDA because they adopted a resolution back in 2015. So they could still technically create a CDA, so it is still happening. But after May 6th, 2016, they lumped those all together as community reinvestment areas. So that's what we will be creating is the Linden Park Community Reinvestment Area. And this is kind of just a pretty version of what I just said. So it has evolved. So 1980 to 1993, we kind of refer to this as the Wild, Wild West days in RDAs. A city just had to do a blight study and create a plan and then they got tax increment for 25 years and it ratcheted down. There was no negotiations with taxing entities. A lot of those right now are, are sunsetting. And then in 1993, they created the EDA and the URAs. And then they realized with those, there was kind of a piece missing for general community development. So because of that, in 2016, they modified the law to allow CDAs which were kind of a catch-all when it came to tax increment financing. And then as mentioned previously, in, in 2016, they combined them all to a CRA. So what is tax increment financing? It's a public financing tool used by redevelopment or reinvestment agencies to incentivize private development in certain areas within their jurisdiction. Agencies are both at the, the city and the county level. And then the tax increment financing, or TIF, allows agencies to capture all or a portion of tax increment within a project area for a given period and that tax increment could be reinvested into the area. And the tax increment is the difference between the amount of property tax revenue generated each tax year by a taxing entity. We call that the base-year value. And then the amount of property tax that would be generated in that same area above and beyond that base taxable area. And this is kind of some of the reasons why they're established. So to help existing businesses, new development, infrastructure improvements, affordable housing, crime reduction, expanded employment opportunities, and that last is kind of a catch-all. Any concerns or priorities that you identify as a board? And then this is kind of a demonstration of how that tax increment is calculated. So if the base-year value is a million dollars here in the dark green and then after that's frozen in time and then this marginal value is what's created after that base year is set for a total of $5 million. So then the county assessor would take the $5 million, minus out the $1 million for that $4 million of value. And then they times the certified tax rate and that gives you what the taxes would be on that and then you negotiate to share a portion of that. And then this is kind of the process of creating a CRA. So in April, we adopted the survey area resolution which gave permission for agency staff and consultants to draft a project area plan and budget. And then there are some noticing requirements that, that we followed of noticing the project area plan where we have to send it out to property owners and taxing entities. And then this highlighted in red is where we're at today. So we hold a public hearing and then after the public hearing, the RDA will adopt the plan and budget and then the city by law will adopt an ordinance making the plan the official project area plan for the Linden Park CRA. And after that, we go through and we negotiate and adopt inter-local agreements. So as we talked about last time, this is the area of the project. So about 6.8 acres. The current value is 3.198 million, so that will be the base-year value. And the city is currently getting $3,600 in annual property taxes on that project, that land.
That's the city's portion.
That, just the city, correct. Yep. The reasons why we created the CRA is it stimulates capital investment and development on the land. It will promote job creation and then it expands the tax base for all the taxing entities. And then this is the development assumptions. So a 30,000-square-foot auto dealership. We're projecting that's gonna be valued at about $221 a square foot. So the total value would be 7.1 billion. When we say personal property value, we're not talking about the auto, the vehicles, but the service parts, the desks they'll have there. So that kind of general personal property value. So the total assessed value would be $8.6 million. It's projected it'll be on the 2024 tax rolls. So the assessed value in 15 years would be the base year plus the new incremental value. So after 15 years, it'll be $11.8 million. Some renderings of the dealership. This isn't the specific dealership that will happen in Linden, but this is kind of what Kia's, what they're kind of requiring in their new dealerships. And then this is, when we create these project areas, it's really important that as we're using public dollars, that we say, what's the but-for or the extraordinary expense? We want to make sure that there's rationale behind using public dollars. And so this is what the developer has identified. The big one is there's a land purchase premium well above the appraisal value that they received, that they had to pay to get this land. There will also be an underground water detention system that they need to do and then a potential storm drain relocation. So they've kind of identified their but-for between a million and $2.5 million. And then the other construction costs that we call kind of typical development costs are that $8.8 million. So what we are proposing is to do a single entity, so Linden City. These projects, as it's a relocation, I believe Adam mentioned this in our previous meeting, it's not really a benefit for the county to participate because they're just moving from one city to the next. So with these, kind of the norm throughout the state would be it's one that really just the city participates on. So that's what we're doing. So we're saying 15 years and 75% of that increase in tax value. And then this kind of shows, so you're currently getting 3.5, or 3, $3,500 in base-year taxes. And then the pass-through you'll get is additional $2,400. So during the 15-year life of the project area, you'll be receiving, as the city will be receiving, $5,900 and then the 15-year total is $89,000. And then the use, the estimated sources and uses of tax increment. So during 15 years, we're showing that the property tax increment will be about $108,000. And how it will be used, there's a mandatory 10% CRA housing requirement. So that'll be about $11,000. And it's really interesting, with these tax increment areas, you have to spend them within the boundaries, but not the housing requirement. So you could take that money and spend it throughout Linden if you'd like. You could send it to the county if you'd like. There's really a lot of uses for that. And there's also will be a CAR admin fee of $3,200. That's what they'll do to, so every year, Louis Young's helping Linden right now with creating their annual report, which is required by law. So that's what these funds are used for, is just the ongoing administration of the project area. And then the remaining balance of 87% will go towards that, the things identified in the but-for expenses. So helping offset some of those costs. And as we discussed last time, there is a big sales tax benefit that will come to the city. And to kind of make up that gap, as it's not really a big property tax generator, we are anticipating doing a sales tax particip- precipi- participation as well, sorry. So the average annual gross taxable sales, and this is verified by the Kia, will be about $53 million. And so the average city sales tax during the 15-year period will be $265,000 plus the additional, I didn't change it, I know it's not wrap tax, but the $53,000 park tax for $53,000. And then we're anticipating that the city will also give 50% of that point-of-sale. So not the park tax, just the point-of-sale tax as well for a five-year period. So, and that is estimated to be about $584,000. So during that, the remaining 15 years, the city will receive $3.4 million of sales tax. And then the park tax will be about $800,000. So a total sales tax benefit to the city of $4.2 million. And then after the project area sunsets, you're gonna be about $314,000 and then it'll just grow from there. And then this, so this is the proposed CRA participation. So the 87% of property tax increment, and this is the money that will go to the developer if approved. The sales tax increment would be $584,000. And then there is a fund balance in RDA number three and this is an allowable use of funds for that fund balance. So that would be $250,000 for a total participation to the dealership of $928,000. So a little under their low end of their but-for expense. And then this is the cost-benefit that it shows to the city of, of the project area. So the total revenues coming in, $4.9 million. And then that $942,000 going out for a total net benefit of $3.99 million. So the next steps would be the public hearing after this and then the RDA and city council will adopt the project area plan and budget. Then we will negotiate and draft the participation agreement with the company. And then we'll come back hopefully in two weeks and adopt the inter-local agreement, both the agency and the city, and the participation agreement. Because the goal is to have everything finalized on or before July 1 as that's kind of that cutoff date for the retail incentive deals that the legislature passed this last session. The fact that we will initiate the participation agreement means that it's okay if we go past that July 1 deadline because the state statute states initiated or completed. But it would be good to have it finalized if possible by July 1. So with that, I'll take any questions.
I think the main, you know, discussion point tonight is, do you feel that, that incentive, was it $942,000?
Yeah.
Is that something you want staff, or do you feel comfortable with that amount and allowing staff to move forward and negotiating with the, with the dealership?
Barely below their low end of their but-for.
Yep.
And we excused Councilmember Broderick. He had to head out for something that he'd already given us a heads-up. He had a hard stop at 7:15, so he's excused. Counsel?
I appreciate the amount of work you've put into this, but for this, I don't know that this Kia dealership would be moving forward. I really believe that. And so I think we've made some verbal commitments on our part to, to move forward with this. I think that philosophically, it's sometimes hard to wrap your head around these types of things if it's something we should be participating in. But I, I think this is an absolute win for our city in, in more ways than just the financial benefit, which is significant. So I, I'm excited to move forward and I'm very comfortable with moving forward.
All right, I see some nodding heads. Uh, we, this is a public hearing, so any public comment? This would be your time to get on the record with that, Lincoln. Come on. All right.
I don't know that we did, we entered the RDA, but did we open a public hearing?
But it's, it says it's a review and action, not that it's a public.
Yeah, so what, so the process is after the.
Public hearing.
The public hearing is closed, then you will adopt two resolutions as the RDA board. A resolution adopting the draft area plan and then a resolution adopting the draft project area budget.
And I was informed to treat them separately.
Yep, correct.
For clarification, Randy, you're correct that we listed those as review and action. We do have advertisements that this was posted, that these are public hearings and that's what it's required to be. So we would like you to open a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
I thought we did.
We did open a public hearing.
At the beginning.
We did.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did.
We entered the RDA and opened a public hearing?
I thought we did.
I thought we did.
Pretty sure we did.
Okay. I'll make a motion to open a public hearing just in case.
Okay, motion by Randy, seconded by Daryl to open a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
But we also acquiesce if it's already on the books.
Okay.
On the recording, we'll stand down.
All right, and then, public?
Lincoln?
All right, seeing none from the public, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
A motion by Jake, seconded by Randy. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. This is an action item? Any further discussion?
I think the one thing that, you know, helps us, you know, for me to swallow this a little bit better is that remaining balance that's in that older RDA as well. That, you know, that's a quarter of a million dollars that we've been holding and reserved to mow the lawns and maintain the landscaping over there. So, you know, that's something that.
It's our own but-for.
Yes.
A few years ago, we amended the state statute to allow fund balances. And I think this is a great example of why that's beneficial.
Right. And I would. And I would like, I find it interesting to discuss further, taking those CRA funds, the ten-thousand-seven-ninety-nine, from this and seeing, I think there could be some interesting things to work with with that. That'll be interesting to discuss further at a future time with staff. All right, are we ready to-
All right, one more side comment. This property's been vacant for thirty years. It's been there since Home Depot was approved. And so I know we had some interested site plan potential there for the property, but it was not retail, it was not commercial, it was where an office warehouse type of development-
And apartments, at another time.
That's been discussed.
Yeah.
So this helps move that needle back to what this zone was originally intended for. So I think that's a win for the city.
And you've seen some significant investment by the other dealerships in that area. They've both done multimillion-dollar remodels and added car washes and-
There'll be some synergy too with Kia coming in. I just think it'll be a real boon for everyone.
It's a win-win.
Yep.
As well.
It will, that, those weeds are a mile high sometimes, so.
And just, it's not in the RDA area, but the office warehouse guys did keep the western portion of that property. So they, they'll still do something back there, probably.
Right.
Do you mean eastern?
Oh, sorry, eastern, yes, sorry.
Thank you.
Yep, they kept that, that back portion.
And that'll fit well with what's there. You got the Comcast, you got a few of those buildings that look more flex space.
There's a great big satellite dish back there now.
All right, we're ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution twenty-two-dash-five-dash-RDA adopting an official project area plan for the Linden Park Community Reinvestment Area.
All right, thank you, Jake.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion by Jake, seconded by Daryl, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, hearing none, then we will move to item number four. We do need to open, I was informed, another public hearing, motion for that as well.
Motion for that.
All right, thank you, Randy, a motion by Randy?
Second.
Seconded by Jake to open a public hearing, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That also passes, all right, we'll turn this over to staff again to present the next portion of this.
Yep, so that's just the project area budget, which we already kind of included in here. So the budget is for the hundred-and-seven-thousand-nine-hundred-and-eighty-seven dollars in property tax increment, and then the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of the fund balance, and then the sales tax increment as well. So we kind of already discussed the project area plan, and the budget just kind of shows the financing of how we're going to achieve those goals in the project area plan.
All right, any questions? Any questions from public or counsel?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you, a motion to close a public hearing by Councilmember Powell. I'll take a second.
I'll second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Magalby, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we are now officially closed for the public hearing and ready to make a motion.
I'll make a motion for, to approve Resolution twenty-two-dash-six-dash-RDA adopting the project area budget for the Linden Park Community Reinvestment Project Area.
All right, we have a motion by Randy.
I'll second.
Seconded by Daryl, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, hearing none, that passes as well, so thank you so much. Board of Directors, have the two titles, and thank you so much for coming this evening and putting together that information.
One more step, so now we have to adjourn, reconvene, and then adopt the ordinance.
That's right, all right.
Motion for that, ma'am.
We're missing the person who is our master at calling for an adjournment, but-
But we, yeah, we've got eleven, right, still?
We need to adjourn this particular RDA.
So, go ahead, please.
I'll move to adjourn the Linden RDA meeting and reconvene the Linden City Council meeting.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by-
I'll second.
Councilmember Powell, all in favor to adjourn and reconvene?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much, that is unanimous. All right, we will go back into the regular Linden City agenda at this time then. And we will move to item number eleven on the agenda, which is now the review and action of this ordinance.
So as stated previously, this is more of just a formality that's part of that state statute, where in order for the project area plan that was adopted by the agency to become the official plan, it needs to be approved through ordinance by the city council. And then part of that ordinance is that it grants permission for staff and consultants to do the noticing that's required to make that plan official.
Very good. All right, we need to open another public hearing.
You're on fire with those.
Open the public hearing.
All right, motion, okay, a motion by Randy, seconded by Jake, all in favor to open a public hearing?
Aye.
Thank you very much, that is unanimous, okay, we are now in a public hearing.
So much pressure on Lincoln today.
All right, Lincoln, it's-
He didn't know he needed to bring his eggie.
He commented. All right, very good.
I'll motion to close the public hearing.
All right, motioned by Jake and seconded by Randy, we had a little flip-flop there, thank you very much, reverse. Okay, so all in favor of closing the public hearing on this agenda item eleven?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that is unanimous. All right, we will now entertain a motion for the ordinance itself.
I'm ready to give it. I move to approve ordinance twenty-two-dash-six-dash-O adopting the Linden Park Community Reinvestment Project Area Plan as approved by the Redevelopment Agency of Linden City as the official community reinvestment project area plan for the project area, and directing that notice of the adoption be given as required by statute as presented.
All right, very good, thank you. Second, okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Hoyt and seconded by Councilmember Magalby, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, hearing none, that is unanimous, thank you very much.
And then just for clarification, the city's not required to adopt the budget, that's why, it's just the ordinance for the plan.
Thank you for that point of clarification.
Come on.
We're done.
Thank you to you.
Thank you.
And Mike as well, a lot of work into this, I think this is an absolute win for the city.
Exciting time.
Great.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Randy. You want to second it?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Van Cherry, all in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you so much, everyone. He's gonna, yes, his streak has ended.